Good morning, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Riceinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We're here this morning to conduct our 19th voting session on amendments and tables to City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the City Council's website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from Bill 12-0152's file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, https://baltimore legislators.com. A copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the Bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office here at City Hall. Her name is Dotarna Austin. I do encourage everyone to visit the City Council's website to stay updated about the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. The city agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We have with us Councilman Bill Henry to my left. Directly across from Councilman Henry is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Happy St. Patrick's Day. To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, the vice chair of the committee. We're also joined by Angela Gibson in the audience representing Mayor Stephanie Lawrence Blake. To my far right is Kara Kuntz representing the president of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young. To my immediate right is Jennifer Coats, who's the staff person for Transform Baltimore. And as my colleague stated, happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. My grand rule is please turn off all cell phones and smartphones to give courtesy and respect to the committee. Communications submitted by councilmembers, Councilwoman Costello to support for amendments T-739 and T-809. Councilman Craft, map amendments, various properties. Councilman Mosby, map amendments at Brookfield Avenue and Whitelock Street. Submitted by organizations. Ms. Joan Floyd, president of RNA. What I have here, statements, suggestions, T-79, section 1-304 and T-679, section 1-306. We also have correspondence from, in regards to Fels Point Overlay from Ms. Deborah De Perre. Is that right? Yeah, she's a resident of the first district. Who's this? Okay, what does she have? Okay. So now we are on, we are now on, there are nine pages of deferrals with text and tables. And we will now start on, does everyone, does all the committee have this? It's page, from page one to nine, the text and tables. Do you have that?
I'm still looking through the packet of stuff that was sitting on the table.
Because Councilman Henry, you're the first one. You're the first one. So we're now, we're starting on T-79. This is T-79. This was Joan Floyd, I think Councilwoman Clark, but I think this, Councilman Henry, do you have language on this?
I did, and I, I'm sorry. Okay, so I do have, I do have language, and I will read it off of the email that was sent.
And staff, we'll get a cop.
Right. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, on page 18 of our zoning code, on page 18 of the bill. We would strike lines 26 through 32 and insert the following. Comprehensive rezoning means an ordinance that approves, authorizes, or amends a prior approval or authorization in the zoning classification of a considerable number of properties based on considerations concerning the common needs of a substantial geographic area and is designed to control and direct the use of land and structures according to present and planned future conditions. And then on page 19, we would strike lines one and six, one through six. I, we, well, we talked about this, and the Law Department asked for an opportunity to review whether it was consistent with state law, and I believe Hillary has comments.
Yes, there were two changes I'd suggest. I would take out multiple property reference because you could actually have theoretically comprehensive rezoning of one piece of property if it were large enough, and an owner could buy a bunch of pieces of property, and it could be consolidated. So you might just want to say property, not multiple properties, just the word property.
But how about property or properties?
That's great, too. And then the other part is, you know, I would add at the end something that references the state law requirement that it be studied by the Planning Commission and the BMZA. So the City Council could propose a comprehensive rezoning, but if you don't have that reference, you really haven't complied with the state law as well as all the, you know, cases on this. So you could say something at the end that says in accordance with state law, or you could say something more specific and say, blah, blah, after study by the Planning Department and the BMZA. I mean, you could make that, or, yeah, Planning Commission, I'm sorry, and the BMZA, or you could just say in accordance with state law, whichever one you feel is better.
I'm comfortable with saying in accordance with state law.
Councilwoman Clark, let's make sure we use the microphone because we're being televised.
Would the maker accept a friendly amendment that says somewhere it must be enacted into law by the mayor and city, or by City Council ordinance?
At the very beginning, it says means an ordinance. So, yeah, and that was one of the things, and just in all fairness, one of the reasons that we hadn't bothered to put the information in there, the wording in there about the BMZA and the Planning Commission is because any rezoning ordinance that the council does automatically gets sent to Planning and BMZA as part of our existing law, or at least our rules. But I'm happy to add the part about in accordance with state law, just to clarify that. And I'm happy to accept the friendly amendment of the property or considerable number of properties.
I'd like to move the amendment as proposed.
I just have one point. I'm very comfortable with the language inconsistent with state law. It might be more transparent to the citizenry to be, use the specific language, BMZA and Planning Commission, but, you know, I would defer to others. I just think that...
On the off chance, on the off chance that our wise colleagues in Annapolis should choose to at some point alter state law and change whether or not the BMZA and the Planning Commission have the same level of impact on comprehensive zoning, on that off chance, I figure if we just say in accordance with state law, we're covered by whatever they do.
Okay.
That's fine.
Where's the sheet?
A motion on the floor.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. Riceinger votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark? Clark is yes. Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton is absent. Mosby is absent. So we have four affirmative with three absent, and T-79 passes. Okay. We are now on, Councilman Henry again, T-682. I think you was, it's mute?
Yeah.
So you withdraw?
Or no motion?
No motion? No motion? Okay, thank you. We are now on T-679. This is Mary Pat Clark, on behalf of Joan Floyd. This is a, is this language, a word change? The Law Department, Council, you have that?
We looked at this, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, there is language.
Make sure you use the microphone, Council.
Excuse me.
Assistant here, the Law Department, if you can strike the word "contains".
Here it is.
And use the word "includes".
So basically, I, it is told, it is said to me as the maker of the motion that upon looking into the definition of environmentally sensitive areas in state code, that, and I have not done that personally, but that it is really a list of specific examples, and that a way to amend, the way to amend this to make it more reflective of the state code is to strike the word "contains" and substitute the word "includes" to be clear that the city is including but not limiting its list of sensitive areas to the list on page 25 to 26.
All right. So you move? I mean, the Law Department's good with this.
I'd like to move in reflection of the law, of that recommendation.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Craft. Riceinger votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark? Clark is yes. Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton is absent. Mosby's absent. We have four yes with three absent. T-679 passes. T-920, agency, planning?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is a cleanup, essentially, in a previous action, the committee added vehicle charging to the list of exempt from zoning, so it, to be consistent, should be deleted from the gas stations.
All right. Moved by Councilman Craft. We have a second by Councilwoman Clark. Riceinger votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark? Clark is yes. Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton is absent, and Mosby's absent. We have four yes with three absent, and T-920 passes. T-207, is this a withdrawal?
Yes.
Councilman Henry moves to withdraw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor the withdrawal say aye. Those who oppose say nay. The ayes have it, and T-207 is withdrawn. T-664, no motion?
This will go to testimony after the interlineated version for the people who are supporting this to articulate publicly what they want to complete the definition.
So there's no motion on this one?
There's no motion at this time. But it's alive.
We're looking at T-228. Councilman Henry?
Yes. No motion or no motion? Actually, so the point, the point of this amendment was really more about who had to receive notice more than it was who was parties, who were parties of interest to the action before the board. So I'm going to withdraw this motion until such a time as we do separate legislation to better describe neighborhood associations.
Okay.
So I withdraw. Move, withdraw.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor to withdraw say aye. Those who oppose say nay. The ayes have it. T-228 is withdrawn. This is planning. T-229?
The recommendation here is delete line 31 on page 72.
Yeah, we would concur with that, especially after the last, the withdrawal of the one before. This would just, you know, tighten that language up.
Okay, that is page, what, 72? Line 31?
Hold on. Mr. Chair?
Councilman Henry?
So, I mean, just to be clear, that there are still parties of interest in the sense of whoever the person making the appeal is, right? I mean, so that...
They would be the parties. They would be the person, the applicant and the government.
Right. So that should take care of that, right?
I mean, the, one of the reasons to recommend removal of that line is the whole public gets notice, and then a subset of the public gets notice.
So because later on, on line one of page 73, it articulates that we're requiring the applicant to post, that's how they got notice, they must have received, I got you. Okay. Move, I'm moving the amendment.
Councilman Henry moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Craft. Riceinger votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark abstains. Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton is absent. Mosby is absent. We have three yes, and we have three absent, and we have one abstained. T-229 passes. We are now on T-302. This is the council president's.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. I move in the notes section, I move number two in the notes section. The City Council and Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may grant major variances from the regulations of this code in accordance with the criteria specified in Section 5 308 of this title and any other applicable standards of this code.
Second.
May I, question, a point of information. Does this remove? Sorry. Does this remove the limit of 25% from the discretion of the zoning board?
Yes, would remove it. It would leave it to the, it would leave it up to the discretion of the BMZA or the City Council, depending on who was doing the conditional use, but it only applies, it only applies to lot area and lot coverage.
But that's so crucial in some of my neighborhoods because people would build, you know, they like, they'd build up to the boundaries if they could, and sometimes they get the permission to, but that 25% is really crucial so that at least we have a guideline and a chance. Like, when people want to, it would have destroyed, in neighborhoods I represent, I can think of two cases, three cases, where that change from 25% of lot area would have meant something built that never, that the neighborhood opposed on the side yard and rear yard.
Claining, you want to respond to that?
So I would have to...
Oh, no, I had a question. I had a question for...
Councilman Henry?
What I wanted to know is, how difficult would it be to limit the BMZA to a 25% variance but allow the council to grant a larger variance by ordinance?
I mean, you can set it up however you want to set it up.
I just want to remind the committee of the variant standards that are very explicit and detailed in the title, and the reason for this is to, I don't like to use the word "force", but to force the BMZA to more clearly follow variant standards. As you know, the practice has been with the current experience with the 25% is they don't even look at the standards, they offer the 25% as a given. And we've gone through a lot of work in drafting this code to reduce the degree of nonconformity. There should be a reduction in need for variances, and therefore this code is drafted to sort of funnel the board more strictly to follow procedures.
Right.
Yeah. Perfect argument for...
Councilman Henry?
A couple of things. One is, at the, with all due respect to our friends and colleagues on the BMZA, I have, I have watched them make decisions in which they, in all fairness, did not actually follow the requirements for a variance. And so, so, but, but, but once they have done that, once they've made a decision, in the case I'm thinking of most recently, in opposition to what the community was requesting, in order to do anything about it, it then puts the community in position of having to spend, like, thousands of dollars, was the quote we were given by a lawyer, to appeal that decision. Well, that will be, that will be nice, but I, I, I just, could, could we, could we look at instead having a smaller limit for the BMZA but allow the council to grant a larger variance by ordinance so that if there is a project where there is clear consensus that a greater than 25% variance is needed, we can do that, but I'm...
It's important. Okay, but...
Councilman Craft?
What, I'm, are I next?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Clark?
I think the argument is that we don't want nonconformity, therefore we want developers to be able to use every square inch of a side yard, a backyard, or whatever, and the only thing that gives us any working leverage in these grossly opportunist proposals are the variances that are required for setback. And I think 25% to change those, to, is a lot to begin with, but we're used to it, we've lived with it, and at least it's, at least we have limits. What's wrong, I mean, what's worse, being technically nonconforming, whatever that really means, or being stuck with a bunch of overdevelopment by greedy developers in people's side yards, backyards, green space, all over the target communities for making money out of Baltimore's success? We need help here.
Councilman Craft?
A couple of points. One is that, you know, every single person that comes in for a variance, and there are lots of people that come in for a variance, are not evil developers. You know, we can't write a law that affects the entire city and every single person that is seeking a variance because there are some evil developers. And I grant that there...
I didn't say the word evil.
Yes, I think you did.
Did I?
Yes, you did.
Oh, well.
You did.
I'm talking only about the evil ones. I'm not saying they are universal.
That's why I just...
But they are very familiar in the neighborhoods I represent.
That's, wait a minute. So my point is this, and I want to sort of tag on to what Ms. Feinberg was saying, and that is, we all know, and I think we've had that experience, and we sort of joke about it, that a conditional use to the BMZA is on the condition that you ask for it. And if you have a 25% variance, the history has been that if you walk into the BMZA and you ask for a variance, they will give you a 25% variance. If you don't have a limit on the variance, then it makes them really have to sit down and say, okay, these are the factors. Why am I giving, you know, you come in and ask for 25% variance, I look at this, you know, you really don't need a 25% variance, you can do what you want with 10%, you know, or 15%. But when you just have that 25% number with the way that the BMZA has historically acted, they may only need 10%. The community may argue for 10%, but the BMZA has basically said, you get 25%, we'll give you 25%, you know? So this gives you much more...
Gives you no.
A greater tool to argue with that. I don't think that, you know, we can say that, you know, every single person is going to come in and say, I want 100%, or I want 50%, or I want, you know, 25%. And there are instances where the community does support something more than 25%, you know?
Not in my district.
Well, but again, you know, we're trying to write a code for the entire city, and, you know, we need some flexibility in it, and if we give this, we have flexibility. Otherwise, we're just creating an automatic 25% variance.
Well, then, may I say one last word, please, about it?
Last word, then we're going to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay. To have no variance limits is worse than having 25% variance limits. If you want to take all variance limits out, I would agree that you need sometimes a little flexibility, but you don't need the whole lot to fill with units inappropriately, and that is what this would allow, and it was not written this way. I thought we were voting on 25%, and it's totally changed. And I would ask that this committee not approve it. It is harmful to neighborhoods.
Well, let's go, let's go for the vote. Motion was made by Craft. Do I have a second? Riceinger, second.
I seconded it.
Henry, second. Okay. Councilman Henry, second. Riceinger is yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark? Clark is no. Henry?
Just a point of information. If I vote no, the amendment fails, in which case I voted on the prevailing side.
No, there is no.
Isn't, there's no prevailing side if there's a no? Not for reconsideration purposes? Okay, no.
You vote no? Henry votes no. Middleton is absent. Mosby is absent. Two yes, two no, with three absent, and T-302 fails for, for lack of majority. We are now on T-361. Councilman Craft?
Okay. Page 119, line 30. Wait a minute, let me get there. Okay. I believe that those new dates were in an earlier amendment. Is that correct?
It's in the packet that I think was recopied for you again, that's dated, Language for Deferred Amendments, 11/23/2015, and it's about in the middle of that packet, under Title VII. And it is a replacement of subtitle III on the flood, which reflects the more recently adopted language. So it's not just the date, there were some other tweaks to that subtitle, and that has, that is in your package.
And what date was that?
It's the agency package that says 11/23/15. I believe Ms. Coats gave it to you again today for voting purposes. And it's, unfortunately, those pages aren't numbered. It would be page six of that packet. At the top of the page says Title VII.
Right.
And about midway down, it says replacement for subtitle III, flood. This is a repeal and replace based on the more recently adopted code.
Oh, so...
For clarity... For clarity, we are recommending that you substitute the entire subtitle rather than just switch dates to make sure it aligns with what you passed.
Okay. All right. Then I would move...
Before you begin, Counselwoman, we are joined by Counselwoman Middleton. Counselwoman Middleton, we are on page two of nine, on the spreadsheet.
Thank you, and I apologize for the late...
That's okay. T 361. That's what we're on right now. So, Counselman Craft, you...
Right. I'm going to move the, I'm going to move that we replace Subtitle III with the Subtitle III that is set forth in the amendments of page November 23 of 2015.
So, you move?
Right.
Counselman Craft moves. Do I have a second?
What number are we on? 361.
T 361. T 361.
Second.
Second, okay. Counselwoman Clark, seconds. Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. So, we have five yes with two absent, and T 361 passes. Counselman Craft, T 362.
Right now, on, let me just, on 362, now we're looking at the standards, and these are the standards that...
It's page 122.
Page 122, and I believe...
Lines 30 to 32.
Right. They are, I believe they are the same in the new, I think they're the same in the new one we just adopted.
Page 122 you just adopted. So, this would be redundant.
Right. And I don't think that, I think we're fine on that.
So, that's moot.
Withdraw.
That's moot. 125, lines 10 and 11.
There's no motion on 362, right?
Motion on 362.
Right. So, now we're on T 6...
363. That's page 125.
Line 10.
Line 10 and 11. This significant development, my question, and maybe Hillary, is this significant development, is this also tied to the critical area?
This is only for the critical area.
And it's tied to the state code definition?
Yes.
I haven't looked at it. I can certainly look at it, but I would imagine that anything you added here, you could add. If you ended up saying something here that conflicted with state law, it would be void anyway.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then, T 363, there's no motion.
Okay, no motion. Okay, so, Counselwoman Clark?
I had written, did we adopt to, in a previous amendment, to extend and say significant development in a critical area? I wrote that out, so we had adopted that.
I have that, I have that note as well. I don't think that hurts, but I think it is redundant because Subtitle IV is Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay Zone. So, everything in 7-4 only applies to the critical area.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Counselwoman. T 365?
T 365 is 125, line 31. And the question there was, and I didn't know what it was, what are water use industries?
I believe that was in the email I sent to you, and I did not bring a copy.
And I don't have that, unfortunately.
Kara, do you have that? I think Kara has that language, that email. But again, this is a critical area use. I believe it is the ones that are dependent on, you know, something that's water dependent.
Right. The, my only concern was, because we have a definition of water-dependent facilities in our definition, that if we're going to have that, I thought that we might want to put, and we have the definition marinas, and we have these other things, that we should have a definition in our definition section of what water use industries are.
Um, see?
That's, hold on one second. Water use industries that withdraw water from surface waters regulated by the state of Maryland, requiring a water appropriation and use permit from MDE.
That's how my father made his living, so that's how I know what that means.
Right. Okay, so, I would, I would move that we would define water use industries as industries that withdraw water from surface waters regulated by the state of Maryland, requiring a water appropriation and use permit from MDE. That would be Amendment T 365. And that that would be inserted on page 63 after line 22, I think it looks like, after 20, after 22, in the definition section.
Good. So, you move it?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselwoman Clark. Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark is?
Yes.
Yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, and Mosby is absent. So, we have five yes with two absent, and T 365 passes. Okay, Counselman Craft, T 364.
Right. And this is...
Still page 125.
Yeah, still page 125, line 16 to 18. Involve an expenditure, and this is in significant development, and this is one of the alternatives for significant development. Involve an expenditure for improvements to the property equal to or greater than 50% of the assessed value of the property as certified by the Department of Planning. And my question about that is, Department of Planning doesn't certify assessments in the city. I think assessments are certified by the Comptroller's Office.
Yeah, with the exception of the assessment for credits for certain CHAP properties, we don't have an assessor.
Right.
So, I mean, I think if you, I don't know what planning...
Well, don't we have an assessor?
We have to sign the permits in the critical area. So, I agree, we may not be certifying the assessment. It may be, the word should be verify.
Verify?
Because we do need to see it as part of the process. So, I would suggest, instead of certify, verify.
Okay. All right. Then I would move to amend line 17, delete the word certified, and insert the word verified.
Okay, Craft moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselwoman Middleton. Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent.
I'm scared.
Clark?
Yes.
I'll leave you two out.
No, we're just becoming like freaking frack over here.
We both seconded it, but it must have sounded like a cave.
It was a tie, so that's why I went to Middleton. Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
The tie goes to Sharon.
Henry's yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. We have five yes with two absent. T 364 passes. We are now on, this is Planning, T 728.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, and I'm not sure how the committee wants to handle this because...
That's page, what, 151?
151.
What, what line is that?
That would be, I think it would be line 12 and 13. And this actually is, I think, T 728 as well as 731. But the amendment is to clarify that office residential zones often have row houses, and that they're, they must follow the provisions for conversions. So, exactly the best, because the council voted to change line 12 and 13 already, I'm not exactly sure of the wording for the amendment. But Kara may have better language.
Kara Kunch from Jack Young's office.
Good morning. Amendment T 369 of Counselwoman Clark's was already adopted, amending this section into three different bullet points, so to speak, under residential conversions. The first one says prohibited in R 5 and R 6. The second says allowed in R 7 and R 8 by conditional use ordinance. And then the third line says permitted in R 9 and R 10. So, my suggestion to Planning's amendment would be to add OR 1 and OR 2...
To the R 9 and 10.
The end of the R 9 and R 10 list, if that's, if the committee does want to include them in that list.
Okay. So, it'd be, so it's, it's conditional by ordinance in R 7 and R 8?
Correct.
And it's, it's permitted in R 9 and R 10?
Oh, that's the conversion.
That's under your amendments?
Performed.
Right, that's your amendment. And then what you're saying is it would also be permitted in OR 1s and OR 2s?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselman Henry?
The only question I would have is whether the OR 1 and OR 2, thinking, I mean, and this is where I'm saying, I can think about where there's OR in my district, but I don't know if that's the same as in other people's districts. In my district, the ORs tend to be closer to either the R 6s or the R 7s. So, I would say, I would suggest, maybe if we were going to do it, we should put it in with the conditional by ordinance as opposed to the flatly permitted, because otherwise, they might end up having conversions just happen in neighborhoods or in properties that are right adjacent to neighborhoods that aren't expecting it to be one.
The OR tend to be in, we have a fair amount of OR in Mount Vernon and in the sort of 25th Street area, Lower Charles Village, and it tends to be more on more major quasi-commercial streets, not internal to the neighborhoods.
I agree, in terms of, but like, for example, the ones I'm thinking of are the ORs on York Road, but up north of Northern Parkway, where they were doctors' offices and nice houses living above. And so, those zoning districts, if memory serves, are pretty low. I mean, I think they're like five or six. Rather than say flatly, they should be in the not permitted category, that's why I'm just saying the conditional by ordinance might be the safest compromise. Because you can keep track of them.
That's right.
Hmm? Conditional by ordinance?
Yeah. Okay, well then, enough said.
Cultural ordinance would be safer.
All right. So...
I second.
Okay.
Counselman Craft moves.
So, we move that OR 1 and OR 2 go in with the R 7s and the R 8s is conditional by ordinance?
Second.
Okay, second by Counselman Henry?
Yes.
Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. So, we have five yes with two absent. T 728 passes. T 731, Planning, is that, is that a withdrawal?
I guess it makes sense to withdraw, but the purpose here was that, to make it clear that the OR conversions are covered by the same standards here, which has the minimum size units. So, I would leave that up as, I guess that's a technical clarification. I think if it's asserted there, it would be covered. Okay.
So, it's technical nature?
Yeah, so I think that's withdrawn.
Okay.
So, you're withdrawing? No motion?
I guess, yeah.
No motion on T 731. Okay, T 668.
No motion.
T 66, T 688. Got that? For the third time, T 688. This is SBA. Okay, moved by Counselwoman Clark. This is page 169. Yes, Counselman Henry?
So, is, so this is page 169.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we agreed to that.
Yeah, I've got language written into my book on that.
Okay. So, where we at with this?
Yeah, we're leading the word limited.
Right.
Yeah, limited is gone.
Limited is gone. Industrial has been married.
Maritime, it's, here's how it reads. It was approved.
Counselwoman Clark moved?
Second.
Second.
It says, it takes out limited, it adds and maritime industrial use.
We got, Counselwoman, we understand. Everybody's good. Counselwoman Clark moved, second by Counselman Craft?
Right.
Rice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
My support for this amendment is just as strong now as it was the last time I voted for it. So, yes.
We agree with you, yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby is absent. Five yes with two absent, and T 688 passes. We are now on, this is your, T 9, T 927. Counselman Craft?
I don't remember.
Again, it was in that same email, the language. The concept here was, the recollection is that councilmen had asked for some language to further clarify and somewhat limit the industrial mixed use to keep some job component so that they wouldn't become completely residential conversions.
Correct.
And what we researched and suggested is the language that Philadelphia recently passed in their code in their equivalent zone, which has a minimum requirement for the non-residential uses.
From what line were we?
What line?
It would...
What page and what line?
I guess it would have to be, not sure where we would put it.
168, somewhere 168?
Probably 168, adding a new C, 11203C.
Right. And what the language would be is this, in the IMU district, an industrial use must account for a floor area located anywhere in any building on the same lot equal to at least 50% of the total ground floor area of all buildings on the lot, or a use other than residential and other than parking must account for a floor area located anywhere in any building on the same lot equal to at least 60% of the total ground floor area of the building on the lot. That helps us...
That helps us to keep the job. The idea is, and what I heard from the councilmen, is a concern of losing the opportunity for the maker space or the true intent of industrial mixed use is that mix. So, this would move it in the direction of that mix, and for someone who really just wanted to do an all-residential building, they would be required to then rezone, because this, that would not be under the intent of industrial mixed use.
Yeah. I mean, what it does is this is simple terms. It says, it says, in an IMU, you could have a first option, and that would be to require an area on the ground floors equalled up to 50% to be industrial. So, you have, still have truly an industrial mixed use. Or you put a requirement in that 60% of the buildings in the IMU be other than residential, so that not, that IMU does not become just a residential classification, and it becomes more of a buffer. and it becomes more of a buffer, a true, a true buffer between industrial and residential, and not just a residential zone.
And the, the percentages actually as drafted are a percentage of the first floor, not of, so if it's a multi-level building, it's still only 50% of the first floor.
If I may, this is a very interesting discussion that needs to be discussed in the public hearing. This is the first time I remember a discussion of this, and I, I for one, among other people, have a lot of IMUs.
I brought this up in September.
Okay, well then, I'm not prepared to, I, it may have some merit.
That's fine, that's fine.
But I, I, I'm not prepared to vote for it, because I, yai, do not, I, I don't understand the impact on this IMU use, which hasn't really been seen yet. And maybe it's something that we need to come back and amend into, but right now...
Again, I think for the committee's benefit, the mapping of IMU has been mapped primarily on properties that are currently zoned heavy industry. So, but that happened to be close to residential. So it is a transition zone, and so it, it's gone from, they have gone from heavy, in some cases M1, the ones are M1. Most of them are M2 or 3, and we have recommended them go to IMU because they are adjacent or near residential. So this is to really fully create that buffer and transition.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm concerned about, because I have a good amount of IMU, and it, it pushes up against the industrial port. And right now, it's, it was industrial land, it's no law, industrial manufacturing land, it's no longer industrial manufacturing land, it's being rezoned to IMU. On, you know, on the east of it, on the west of it is residential, to the south of it is the industrial port. What we don't want to have is just that entire IMU converted into residential. If, if, if we're gonna do that, we may as well just rezone it R.8.
Well, that's not a bad idea in some cases.
But that should be a map amendment. If, if a particular area is intended to be all residential, it should be addressed as a map amendment.
Exactly. If, if it's, if you want to make it R.8, make it R.8.
Make it R.8, right.
But if it's going to be IMU, then it should be an industrial mixed use. It should be part, you know, there can be residential in it, but it really should be a transitional zone so that you can create, I mean, you know, the whole thing with the MIZOD, when we created the MIZOD, was to allow for buffer zones between the port and the industrial and the residential. So you did not have the residential sitting right up against the industrial port. And what the IMU zone does, and that's what it's, one of the principal intents was, is for you to create the buffer zone. So, you know, this allows us to do that. But if, if IMU just becomes another code for an R-zone, then we defeated the whole purpose of creating the buffer.
Well, and I guess it's just depends on where these are located. In my particular district, they are the only really industrial zone buildings, and they're right up against two-story rowhouse blocks left and right. So for, and I'm not interested in having them replace PUDs, I'm not interested in seeing them be 300-square-foot max, minimum housing, because that's so transitional, and we're trying to put, so maybe what I should do is do map amendments to convert them to C1, which allows for not so many obnoxious uses, but I don't own the buildings. Now, that's never stopped me before, but it's late in the process.
Okay.
So I, right now, have no authority and no warning and letters and interviews with people about rezoning their properties. So, and they've got the R-IMU. So that's my dilemma, and I don't like IMU for residential or replacing PUDs. But I, so I would vote against this because it restricts us.
That, that Councilman Henry, you have?
I still have a question, I'm sorry. Because I, I don't actually, I, we, there's only two of us today, so we each get our own microphone. So the, the, I, I don't have any IMU, so I'm still just trying to grasp what we're trying to do with this amendment. It sounded like you were saying that it was gonna require that either IMU has to have 50% of industrial, or, and then what was the second option?
60% commercial.
Or 60% non-residential.
Not residential. But not residential could still be non-industrial commercial uses.
Great.
Correct.
The goal, again, the whole concept of this zone, dating back to the beginning, is that we have many obsolete, former or underutilized industrial buildings. Some of them are multi-level, so that they don't really meet a lot of modern standards, but they may have a ground floor that has a loading dock and is good for a maker business, that sort of thing. So the creation of this was to encourage the reuse of these buildings, but we recognize, and I think Councilman Craft discussed this extensively in the hearing, that there's also that tipping point that it could be, and I don't like the term gentrification, but it, it could create a total reuse of the buildings as residential, which really isn't the intent. We don't want to lose that job creation ability in these buildings. And so we, our research, what we researched is what Philadelphia had done, and they literally did this just a couple of years before you. They adopted their code and immediately put in this amendment. This is the exact language that they put in for their amendment because of the concern of, again, for lack of a better term, gentrification.
Councilman Craft, if we're gonna take a vote?
Yeah, let me just give a specific, I mean...
You still, you have a question? Just, just, I'm sorry, just what, and this is just for me to understand. Do all four of you have IMU in your districts?
I do. Ed does.
Okay, and Chair?
I mean...
There's some in Council and Middleton, maybe a small amount.
Councilman Costello has it.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah. And, and, and I can give you probably the most egregious example, and that is Canton Crossing, where the Canton Crossing, under the existing zoning in a PUD, right, has a residential tower that literally can be built 10 feet from the driveway of Maryland Overpack, which has a couple hundred trucks running through on a gravel road every single day. And they only are required to have a 20-foot wall between the two of them with a high-rise apartment building. So even though you put a disclaimer in the lease saying you are sitting up against, right, you are sitting up against this building that's throwing up dirt, and right next to that is, are oil tanks, and right next to that are, you know, all the salt piles at Ruckel Terminals, you know, you need a buffer between those two things. If you allow IMU and you allow it to be totally developed as residential, then if you, a building across the street on, and I, again, most people are familiar with Boston Street, if you go across the street and you take where those empty warehouses are, you rezone them from the manufacturing zone that they have now, and you rezone them to IMU, and those people clear those warehouses and build townhouses in there, then now you've got the townhouses sitting up on the railroad tracks against, you know, and they make a lot more money developing as townhouses than they do with a res, industrial residential use.
Sure, and then there, and then the people who buy them for some bizarre reason call their councilperson to complain about the train.
Exactly, which is what exactly, which...
Let's, let's, look, we've discussed this. You making a motion on this?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman, we, we've had enough discussion on this. He's making a motion. Councilman Craft moves. Do I have a second? Riceinger votes, Riceinger seconds. Craft?
Yes.
Be Riceinger. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
No.
Clark is no. Henry?
Yeah, I'm gonna sit this one out.
Huh?
I pass.
He's saying abstain.
Okay.
Henry abstains. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. We have three yes, one no, two absent, and one abstained. T.927 passes. We are now on T.631, Councilwoman Clark?
Um, oh, hi. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm accustomed as I am to having a proposal. T.536 is a...
No, T.631.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what?
T.631.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's withdrawn. I, I withdraw. I moved to withdraw. What?
Councilwoman Clark moves to withdraw?
Second.
I was, I was gonna offer a friendly amendment to it, to see...
It's withdrawn.
It's, it's moot because...
We already...
We did what, now, and I, and I am confirm-
Second, you withdraw.
I withdraw.
Councilman Craft seconds. All those in favor of the withdrawal say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and T.631 is withdrawn.
And point of information, we have now twice adopted across all tables the removal, the, the new requirements about stealth.
Okay. We are now on T.788. This is Planning. Is that a withdrawal?
Yes, we withdraw. The, the concern that we had was addressed in a previous vote, but I have a note here that Councilman Henry had some concerns, but...
Okay. Is there motion to withdraw?
I don't have it.
Second by, who moved to withdraw?
No.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of the withdrawal, seven, T.788, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and T.788 is withdrawn. We are now on, um, T.536. This is Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, members of the council. This is an amendment that says that large dish antennas require zoning board approval as a conditional use, and that instead of being set back five feet from the rear boundary of the property, should be set back 10 feet. Now, in some respects, I would agree that, I, I, here's my problem. I don't know the category under which large dish antennas is included, so I, I, I think they're conditional uses, but I need verification about whether they're consider, what they're, they're not in the tables as such. What are they covered by, by, what generic term in our tables?
Is that question to Planning?
Yes, or, or anyone.
Is that page 257?
Yes, sir.
On line 33.
So I, I'm, I'd like to move...
They're covered as an accessory structure in, in Title 15, subtitle 5.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry, what page?
Title 15, subtitle 5, page, um...
257.
Hmm, wait a second. 516, yeah. 257, yes. So they are not a standalone use, they're just like a pergola or a, something accessory, and, um...
Pergola.
Pergola, thank you.
Um, so basically, we, I'm gonna have to do this in the text amendments, correct? Because that's how they're being done. So I would like to move this motion, um, proposal. What?
Councilwoman Clark moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second so I can ask the question.
Okay, second by Councilman Henry. He has a question on a motion.
Um, it also seems to add a, but in no case can the setback be less than 10 feet.
That's what I'm doing. I'd be glad to change it if you vote for the conditional use.
My concern is that, that would effectively prohibit them if the yard is less than 20 feet wide, which a lot of rowhouse yards are.
Or deep, you mean. It's from the back.
But it says from all lot lines, so that would...
You know, I, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I'd be glad to take that out, but I need it to be a conditional use.
Yeah, okay.
A large dish.
If, if, if we're gonna let, go-
So it wouldn't change the five-foot setback.
Yeah.
I would just like it to make sure in the text it's a conditional use, because it's big.
I think it's, I think that it is correct, that it's not really a table. It would be on page 257, and, um...
The text?
Um, yeah, I mean, just for the council's consideration, this is really pretty dated technology at this point anyway, so I'm not sure that it has any effect, but...
Well, I mean, it might, just for a couple guys, here and there, but...
It would be in page 257, lines 33 to 36.
I, I understand what you're saying, but since it's before us, I'd like to at least give, you know, people a warning. It's a large one, it's a large antenna.
33 to 36, one, two, three.
It has to go in a rear yard.
Line 36.
Okay. But I would like it to have to go to the zoning board.
Yeah. Councilman Craft?
Hillary, on, on this one here, um, this whole thing on antennas, and we've had this conversation before, right? So if we make them a conditional use on large dish antennas, it's to the extent that we can regulate it?
I, I don't know, but my understanding was, there was a, was there a table thing that already did this?
No. No, these aren't, okay.
So Kara comes through the Council President's office, because I think I need help and clarification on the same question Law Department was asking. If the wireless telecommunications antennas were made conditional by board in all of the tables, except for where they're listed as permitted encroachments in Table 15601, then which, I mean, are the wireless telecommunications antennas that were made conditional by board in the committee when they adopted T.217 different than what is in Table 15601? Because I'm not sure what the practical...
Satellite dishes are different than wireless, but I'm not...
I think you may be creating, um, you may be creating conflict between this and the tables.
Well, you know, I didn't create this list. Actually, this list is already here all about satellite dish antenna.
No, I'm saying if you insert required zoning board approval as a conditional use, you may be, you may be creating a conflict between this and the tables.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, show me, show me where they're in the tables. I just missed, I know.
Wireless antennas. Wireless antennas.
And then that's how we're gonna categorize them.
That's what they are.
Satellite dishes I don't think are wireless antennas.
I thought they were wireless, and I thought that's what you just said.
Yeah.
Hillary, can you clarify?
It looks like T.217 was deleting P, P2, and P4, and, and dropping a P3 footnote, and we sort of had all of this with respect to wireless telecommunications antennas. I'm just trying to look at my notes.
This is not wireless.
So I guess we're talking here about whatever is a large antenna not wireless?
This is a dish. It's neither an antenna nor is it wireless.
Okay, so then I guess at that point you have to decide what you want to do about that, but...
Wait a minute, that's, I'm gonna hear from the Law Department.
I, I mean, I can definitely see if there's something we have done in the past that would create your conflict. I'm not sure.
I think one problem is that this, these tables use generic terms.
No. It's, it's not...
Yeah, they do. And so some things are caught up under them, but we're not sure which. And in this case, I, I just like it spelled out, if you could.
I don't think, this is on the list, satellite dishes are in Table 15601 as what we call permitted encroachments. They're treated like playground equipment and fl- we call permitted encroachments. They're treated like playground equipment and flagpoles and things like that. Title 15, it doesn't get, doesn't even really consider them a use per se. It is simply, for lack of a better term, stuff that goes in yards, and that's how satellite dishes were categorized. They are different than wireless antennas because they are not wireless, for one thing, and they're not really antennas. They are the round dishes. Um, so in the list of permitted encroachments in Title 15, you know, gives the very specific standards for how you can or cannot put these things in your yard, and that is essentially what Title 15, subtitle 5, does.
Like, just, I, everybody, I, I'm, all right, I surrender. Uh, like, like, do, I, we have a lot to get through.
Yeah, we're only on page 3 of 9, yes.
This is too much discussion about something that, I mean, I'd, I'd like to make the motion, if you're gonna kill it, kill it, but I'd like to try to get it to the zoning board. I think it stands alone. It can't do any harm. It's part of a long list of things about satellite dishes. I didn't invent the list.
Mr. Chair?
The thing is, it's permitted, it's a permitted use without conditional in, on page, in the encroachment.
It's not treated as a use. I know that's confusing. It's, it's a permitted encroachment.
Okay, you know, it's, you, you set out that it has to be a certain number of feet from boundaries, which tells me it must be some kind of use, but you know what? I, I'm not gonna, I'll withdraw this darn thing. I don't have one of these things, and if I get one, I'll be back to amend the law.
Second.
I'm withdrawing it.
Okay, so...
I'm not gonna spend the morning fighting for a satellite dish.
So, Councilwoman Clark, through all this, you're withdrawing T-536. Councilwoman Henry seconds. All those in favor of the withdrawal, T-536, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. T-536 is withdrawn. We are now, we are still on page 3 of 9. We got a ways to go yet, so if we could try to limit the conversation, just go to the point. Um, we got T-537. Councilwoman Clark?
Correct. This is relevant to the future, not the past. I know personally, from Wyman Park, uh, this is, I'd like to move an amendment that says, in all residential districts, zoning board approval is required for solar alternative energy systems as a conditional use. It is a way to let people know there's going to be more and more. They require infrastructure that does appear and impact. I think it's a great thing. I love solar. We just need to know it's coming.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to indicate, similarly with the last one, these aren't listed as uses. They're listed as items you put in your yard, essentially, so...
Accessory.
If you want to go through this whole process, then you, you are putting it in tables where it goes, and then amending your language. So I just want to be clear that it's not as simple as changing something from permitted to conditional by board. It's never been a use. It's only, list as I understand it is in 15601. It's on page 39 of the tables. It lists a bunch of things people can put in their yards. So this, just like the, that was my confusion on the previous one, there is no such thing as a satellite dish use, and there's no such thing so far as in solar alternati, alternative energy systems use. It's not a use. It's considered like an item. So if you're gonna change that, just know you need language throughout the code and in whatever tables to make it permitted or conditional wherever you want it.
This is not, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Huh?
If there's anything that's been on this list for months, it's these two amendments. I am glad that we're all now focused on them. I will do whatever is required because I can witness to my colleagues that some of these installations, neighbors go crazy if they don't know about it and have a chance to get input in advance. I promise. Therefore, I will do what you want. I will bring in the amendments, but I will, I, this has been sitting here for a reason, for a long, long time. You're using generic words for categories of things that you're now saying aren't things. I'm saying these two things are things, and that I will work with this council to get them put in the proper place, but one proper place is where I'm asking you to please approve them. It, and I will then go to amend tables to add their names. These are things that will be affecting us more and more. Antenna, big antenna, I gotcha. It's like a going out, but these are coming in, and when they're coming in, they're coming in with a bang by neighbors when the installation is intrusive.
Okay, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kraft and Councilman Henry, we're gonna, we gotta move, move on.
All right, I'm, okay.
So my, my thought is that, um, this may be something that we may want to look at as a use, um, because, you know, I have concerns about this myself, because we were talking before about distinguishing, distinguishing them being in the yards or being on, on people's roofs, and I think, I think if you're gonna put it on your roof, I don't think that that necessarily needs to have a BMZA approval. That's up on your roof, that's nobody's business, but if it's gonna be a...
I'll show you a roof.
No, but I'm just saying, it's, um, but if it's gonna be in the yard next door, if it's a windmill or something like that, I think there's more, um, more concern about it, but I think we ought to look at it and see, because if we, if we're leaving it as the encroachments, then we have a problem. So it's either gotta be one or the other.
It's obviously the committee's decision on this. I did discuss it with our sustainability staff, and, um, we are getting hundreds of permits for solar on roofs on this basis. I mean, right now, and they are permitted. We, it's a huge, huge increase. It's become economical.
Let the committee, Councilwoman, Planning's talking, so we gotta be able to understand what she's saying, and then we'll go to this. Planning, go ahead.
I, I would hope that this, the, the council would be very deliberate on this prior to moving it to a use that is conditional. This is something that's very fully supported by our sustainability folks. We are seeing a huge increase because it is now become affordable on residential basis. The tipping point has happened, and many, many citizens are installing these on their property, primarily on their roof because that's the best place for it. Um, you can't put a solar panel in your yard and have a tree, um, and most people like trees, so we don't see a whole lot of installations of these things in yards. There may be an occasional one, um, but they are growing. And I did send some correspondence, I think, to Councilwoman Kraft and Middleton. I, I know she's on our Sustainability Commission from our staff on this matter, and, um...
Okay, so, all right, so Councilwoman Clark, T-537, T-538, basically almost the same thing?
Defer for future consideration and vote.
Okay, so that's T-537 and T-538?
Yeah, wind and, and solar vote.
Okay.
For conditional use approval by the zoning board.
Okay, so do I have a motion to defer, Councilwoman Clark?
I'm moving to defer to a, to a vote of this committee as part of this process.
We're gonna have a further discussion. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to defer for further discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and T-537, T-538, uh, would defer for follow, uh, future discussion on this. Um, we are now on T-918. Councilman Kraft?
Kara, didn't we do this? Did we adopt it, or we, we got the language, right?
I think both, um, the Department of Planning and I had done reviews of the DGS curb cut policy to, and compared it to this. We didn't see the additional leniency or anything to remove, and the committee had deferred this pending that study, um, so we don't have a recommendation for a deletion at this point.
Okay, well, let's leave it alone for now. No motion.
No motion. Okay, thank you.
And we withdraw the next one that was in here.
T-821.
Withdraw.
Move to withdraw.
Moved by Councilwoman Kraft, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw, T-821, say aye. Those opposed say, uh, nay. Ayes have it, T-821 is deferred, is withdrawn.
T-829 is, is somewhat technical. It's, it's creating a incorrect, um, duplication, and it's page 180, delete lines 27 and 29. 180, I believe it is.
So you're saying this is technical in nature?
Um, well, we have information incorrect in one place and different than another, and it is simplified. This is in the, the TOD zones, bicycle parking, and it has one standard in the TOD zones that conflicts with the parking section, and it's really better to keep it all in the parking, so we, uh, delete lines 27, 28, and 29 on 180.
Everyone good? Okay, so now we're on...
I think you need a, I don't know if you need a motion, or is that technical? Okay.
Yeah, no motion.
Sorry.
Um, now we are on fourth page of nine pages. We are on T-705. Everyone at, page 4, T-705 on the top of the page. This is Planning.
Yes, this is something we discussed earlier, and, um, the goal would be to, uh...
Allow the reuse.
To be a little more flexible on non-conforming retail, on, essentially liquor stores, when they want to convert to something else if they were non-conforming. So those residential liquor stores, um, the best way to do the intent, we believe, is on page 317, and this is the, uh, non-conformities.
So if it liquor store...
We want, the intent is to make it a little bit easier for a liquor store to convert to something else if it's in a residential area. Um, and so, we would allow an exception. It's page 317, line, after line 17, um, this says that a, right, what it says now is, this is change of use in non-conforming. Non-conforming use may not be changed to any other one, other use, except one that is allowed within the zone, and we would suggest that there be an exception added after that, and I don't know if it needs to be a, a point C or a subpoint under B there on line 17 that says, except for non-conforming liquor stores, could convert to a use listed under neighborhood convert commercial. So the concept that the commission proffered is to be more lenient.
So let me make, let's use an example. So if you had a liquor store, and the liquor store was in an R8, right, and you didn't rezone it to C1, you left it as R8, and the liquor store didn't want to be a liquor store anymore, right? So, are you saying that the liquor store could then be anything in a C1?
No, just anything in the list of neighborhood commercial. I, I would like, and I, to Councilman Henry's point, this amendment may be unnecessary if the council completes and passes the amortization as drafted. Um, I think, to be honest, that the, the commission at the time was concerned that you might not pass that section of non-conformity, so this was sort of another way to skin the cat, which was by encouragement, but... This would only apply to those R8 liquor stores.
This is, we're gonna pass that, right?
Okay, then this may not be necessary. Okay.
Okay, so, so there's no motion. Okay, no motion on T-705. Okay, we are now on T-946. This is Councilwoman Clark.
Oh.
Page 318, line 28.
I'm sorry, I, I lost my, what page of the, page four of 9?
Page 318, line 28.
And where on it? I don't see it. 946?
Kara Kuntz on behalf of the Council President's office. What's cut and paste into the proposed amendment column on the spreadsheet is the language that Councilwoman Clark worked on with housing?
I'm sorry. I apologize. It's not on my sheet, but I guess it got onto the morning sheet. All right, 946.
It's on your desk.
Okay, it's on my desk. I've got the, I've got the amendment. Thank you. Um, this is, um, uh, housing was kind enough, Sharon DeBoyne, to work on the language. It's, um, we're talking about, um, line 28. On page, Stephanie, can you help me here? Um... Excuse me. Just tell me where it is in the book. What, 318? Okay, excuse me. Um, I, I just don't have a sheet.
So you want to move this?
Yes, I'd like to move it.
Councilwoman Clark moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Weisinger votes yes, Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes, Branch is absent, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm a little confused because, I, well, except, I'm, this is page 318 of the book, the original book, and line 28. So this is specifically about junk or scrap storage in your...
No, it, it precedes that. It's just, it's a new line 13.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby is absent, so we have five yes with two absent, and T-946 passes. Uh, Planning, T-638, is this a withdrawal?
Uh, this is not necessary. Yeah.
Move to withdraw.
Moved by Councilwoman Kraft. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of the withdrawal say aye.
Which one?
T-638.
Okay, fine. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I...
Okay, T-638. All those in favor of the withdrawal say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, T-638 is withdrawn. Before we go on T-835, is a question from the committee?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry, to take us back to Amendment 946, T-946. I'm, I'm reading the amendment, and the amendment says af, under subsection 18308, which is back, okay...
There's a page number missing. It's that first part you're reading is on page 317, and then the second part is adding a new line on page 318. So the problem with what's in your tables is it's missing page 317 from the first, the very top of that amendment.
Okay, so, I'm, here's what, it, it says, after has been discontinued for 12 consecutive months. Where, okay, there we go, line 28 of page 317.
Yes, 317.
I gotcha. I gotcha. That's where this goes. Okay.
So everybody, everyone's good?
Is that clear? Is that going to be clear so that the legislative reference, when you pick it up, record?
I gotcha.
Yeah, she's got it. She's got it.
I had the same problem with it, and, um, I'm sorry.
Page 317 is the first part, and then page 318 is after line 13. I gotcha.
So everybody's good?
I'm good, thank you. I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We are now on T 489. Okay, Councilwoman Clark, we are on T 489.
And for T 835, may I suggest—
That's 537 and 538. That's the same thing.
Yeah, and I've been chatting with our sustainability staff, and if we could do maybe a session with the councilmen to work through the concerns and come up with something.
Yeah, that's—the same issue.
It's related. It's not exactly the same, but they're related.
Okay, so we're gonna defer this.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer T 835 for further discussion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. 835 is deferred for further discussion. I'm going down to T 489, correct?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'm now working off different sheets. I'm working off different sheets from everybody else.
I think this is related, again, to the discussion on alternative energy, so I would encourage either—if it's not withdrawn, to wait.
Stephanie, I'm using—
Rest of T 489.
Sheets like everybody else has.
Is this the same?
See, that's why I wanted to—
Yeah, this is the same thing.
That we—we're having a further discussion on?
Yeah, this is the same thing.
I'm sorry, Stephanie and I failed to pick up—
That's okay, Councilwoman.
—the sheets, not realizing, and so we're not exactly got the same things as everyone else.
Well, you should have. It's one of the— It's on the table.
489. This talks about, again, conditional use approvals for solar, wind, and geothermal alternative energy sources, which, again, we're back to the same discussion we had for 537 and 538.
I'm sorry. 489.
Right. That should go with 537 and 538 and 835.
The solar and the—
Right, because—
It does go with that, yes.
Right, right. Move to defer.
Move to defer to be voted on up or down during this—these deliberations now.
Because I have one in there, too. Okay. All right, second?
Okay, motion to defer.
Motion to defer.
Okay, motion for T 489, right? It's deferred. Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor to defer T 489 for further discussion say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. So T 489 is deferred for further discussion. We are now on— We are now on T 742.
Yes, this is a planning amendment, and my notes say defer to Councilman Costello, and I think he supported this.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. This is in Councilman Costello's district. He's indicated his support for this. Is there a motion on T 742? Got a motion on 742 for Councilman Costello?
Oh, yes, that's right. Move—move amendment 742.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. We've got Councilman Riceinger, Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton? Councilman Mosby, absent. Five yeses, no nos, two absences, no abstentions. 742, five to two.
Yours is 735.
So what was that, T?
742.
Okay.
What is the number of my amendment, please, that you were looking at? 735? Just let me find it, please.
T 35.
35, not 72.
T 35, I'm conflating.
Oh, T 35?
T 35.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Move to withdraw. This has been already approved.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Clark to withdraw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 35 is withdrawn. Okay, Councilman Craft?
This is—I moved T 739. This is Councilman Costello's.
Second.
Okay, T 739 moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry.
Yeah, he Riceinger votes yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. So we have five yes with two absent, and T 739 passes.
And for the staff, that's page 165, line 49, 45 feet to 50 feet.
I'm sorry, what is that?
I was just—for the staff giving the page reference, page—since it was missing. Page 165, line— The one you just voted, just for their—so they know where it is.
Okay, all right.
It was missing. 165, page 165, line 49.
So we're now on page what, six? Yeah, just bear with me. We are now on T 611.
Got it.
Councilwoman Clark, it's the—I think it's the—take the top?
It is. I'm only—the only things remaining here that haven't been defeated, approved, or withdrawn are residential care facilities 17 or larger in IMU. And the law department was looking at this, and so it got deferred while they did. My recommendation is to move to—move it from conditional by the zoning board in IMU to blank, which sort of fits in with what we just passed about the industrial nature of IMU.
Okay, law?
Yeah, it—for the dwelling—if dwelling multifamily is permitted somewhere, then a residential care facility also needs to be permitted there. So they kind of parallel between dwelling multifamily and residential care over 17, or dwelling regular and residential care under 17. So you'd have an ADA issue if you were to make it different, but I guess you could just—you know, if you wanted to make—delete all dwelling multifamily, then.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
Requirement—excuse me? Uh, make it—move to make it conditional by ordinance.
Have to treat them all the same.
But it's the same as multifamily. We made multifamily conditional by ordinance.
That wasn't passed.
Well, what's the—I'm sorry, what is the requirement for multifamily?
Permitted.
It's permitted in that area, I think. Yes.
17 or more— In a residential care in an IMU?
Right.
By—because we can't do anything else?
Right, federal.
Because you can't treat them differently than other multifamily.
This IMU is not cooking up to be a good stew. Okay, then I have—no motion.
Okay, no motion?
What?
Well, we did have another deferral further down. Okay.
I do have one more in this 611, so it was—
Which one?
No motion on the first one. Entertainment live, standalone establishment, a motion to make it conditional by ordinance in an IMU as opposed to conditional by the zoning board.
Friendly amendment. We had—so we had discussed language to break entertainment live—
Oh, yeah.
—standalone down into different categories based on—at the recommendation of the planning department, based on fire-rated capacity. And so we would create three different categories: entertainment live, standalone small, which would be a fire-rated capacity of 60 or smaller, and that would be permitted in IMU. Then—then there would be a second category of entertainment live, standalone medium, which would be a fire-rated capacity of 61 to 120, which would be conditional by the board. And then a third category of entertainment live, standalone large, which would be a fire-rated capacity of 121 or more, which would be conditional by ordinance.
So your motion is on both of them?
How about—
Well, I'm making—I—well, I was making a friendly amendment.
Can I friendly back to ask you if you could just break it in—I mean, I'd like—I need—if anybody's gonna live in these places with this manufacturing and these parties, I would like them, even with just 60 capacity, to have some kind of—some kind of say about operating conditions. So if I—how about CB—what am I—I'm asking for—I'm asking for ordinance no matter what. I'm happy to accept the three tiers, but I'd like the first two to be CB and the last one to be CO. Would you consider that?
I—I—well, I guess if I could say this flatly, I would consider that, but I don't think it would pass. I think that there is a desire to have some level of live entertainment that's just flatly permitted at a small level, and that IMUs aren't necessarily going to definitely have residential in them, and that in places where—
They don't have residential. I don't care if they have a—
But that's—the problem is that across the city, there are gonna be IMUs that don't have any residential in them, and people are gonna be annoyed if they have to go get zoning board approval to put a 40-person black box theater in an industrial area.
It's the residential that's gonna make the finances work. That's why it's in there.
Okay, so Councilwoman Clark?
So but I'll—look. I'll accept the friendly amendment, but can I wait until I see if anybody would—well, you're not gonna do this. I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so you move?
Well, yeah, I accept the amendment. It's been moved and seconded.
Councilwoman Clark moves. Second by Councilman Henry?
Yep.
Correct?
Correct.
Riceinger votes no. Craft?
No.
Craft is no. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Yes, Middleton? Middleton is no. Mosby is absent. Yes, two, three, no, with two absent. Motion fails, majority. So we're finished with T 611, correct?
Yeah, that's right. So let me just make sure. So every—so live entertainment standalone in these IMUs are still—they still have to go to the zoning board? Of all sizes. So this is better than—
Okay.
All right.
We are now on T 296. This is SBBA.
The long letter, I think, yeah.
Okay, all right.
These are just not gonna work where they're being put.
We're gonna—motion is moved to defer till we get further information. Do I have a second to defer? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to defer T 296 for further discussion say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 296 is moved to defer to further discussion. We're now on T 847. Councilwoman Middleton, you move?
Kara Costello, again, these were, I think, deferred because Councilwoman Middleton was going to move them but was absent from an afternoon session, so they were deferred until her return. There's four similar amendments to this one for the low-density— And I think the—not low-density, I'm sorry. It's the industrial— Yeah, and the low-density residential.
Councilwoman Middleton moves. Move, second by Councilwoman Craft—I mean Clark? Councilwoman Clark. Riceinger votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark is—
Uh, yes.
Yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Is yes. Mosby is absent. We have five yes with two absent, and T 847 passes. We're now on T 907, planning.
I'm sorry.
This is bone regulation. What—this is page 20 in the text, right?
And I—oh, gosh, I thought I had language for that. Did we—
This is a table, not a text amendment. In table 11401, planning would like to ask for no minimum lot area for reuse in the IMU, and a 5,000-square-foot lot area for new builds in the IMU.
Currently, it says 5,000-square-foot minimum for the lot area in IMU, but because IMU is primarily for existing buildings, and we want to encourage creative reuse, we would like to recommend that—that we don't have that minimum for existing buildings. This will not affect many properties, because most of them are already 5,000, but this would really apply to that random, small, little industrial building, and eliminate that extra hoop if it's existing there to be reused.
Okay, do we have a motion to move? No motion?
Fails.
No motion.
No motion, fails on a motion. That's 11—I mean, that's T 907, correct? No motion. We are now on page seven. Page seven, T 849. This is Adam Baker, who'll be here for BG&E. Is this Council?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton. Who seconded it? Council?
I did.
Councilwoman Clark, second. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
Yes.
Is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. We have five yes with two absent, so T 849 passes. We are now on T 825, planning. Is this a withdrawal? This is T 825, Planning Commission, page 43.
Yes, this is a withdrawal. I'm sorry, this was an error.
Okay.
To withdraw.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark to withdraw, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to withdraw T 825 say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 825 is withdrawn.
And the next one, I think you do have the support of Councilman Costello now for that.
Costello, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Moved by Councilwoman Craft, second by Councilwoman Middleton? I mean, Clark?
Whoever.
Moved by Craft, second by Councilwoman—Councilwoman Clark.
We are on 8089, yeah. Gotcha.
Okay. We are on T 809. Costello, it was moved by Craft, right?
Right.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Riceinger votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch is absent. Clark?
I think I already withdrew it, yes.
Clark is yes.
I withdrew it.
Henry? Bill Henry?
Yes.
Yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent. So we have five yes with two absent. T 809 passes. We're now on T—Councilwoman Clark, we're now on T—
Move to withdraw. T 4.
Second, moved by Councilwoman Clark to withdraw, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw T 4 say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 6, Roland Park Civic League. This is—is this a withdrawal? It's already a conditional use.
It's really not an amendment as written.
Okay, so there's no motion. We don't—no motion.
We—we got this covered.
Okay, so now we are on—
Well—
T 844, right? T 844. This is BG&E. Councilwoman Middleton?
Uh, I make a motion.
Councilwoman Middleton? Moves. Do I have a second? Clark, second. Riceinger votes yes. Reisinger votes yes, Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes, Branch is absent, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Is yes, Mosby is absent. We have five yes with two absent, so T eight four four passes. We are now on T ten. Councilwoman Clark? This is back with the antennas.
This is redundant, I hope. Uh, thank you.
With the withdrawal. Councilwoman Clark moves to withdraw, second by Councilwoman Kraft. All those who are in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T ten is withdrawn.
Redundant, yes.
Page eight of nine, and we are on T forty eight, T forty eight, um, Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, I would like to move this, um, this is alternative energy systems. I mean, it's your pets, the solars and all those things, but what I'm saying is to, I'm making a motion to delete the footnote, um, in these two tables, eight three oh one, nine three oh one, that, that get, make it, these permitted uses in half-acre properties or less, and I would retain the conditional, in other words, it's conditional by board approval across the residential board, in all residential districts.
Mr. Chairman.
But, let me complete, if I could, my motion or sentence. But the, but exempted from, uh, zoning board approval are lots that are half an acre or less, and I'm trying to re-
Mr. Chairman?
Half an acre, no.
I think this ties back to the discussion that we've been having-
Same discussion.
As to whether solar alternatives-
Yeah, it does tie back, but Mister, but, but my-
Well, let me finish. I think it ties back because we have to determine whether these are going to be uses, and then if we determine whether they're going to be uses, whether solar's going to be uses, whether wind's going to be used, whatever, then I think we can determine whether it's solar roof, solar yard as a use, what we can turn-
Well, this one is, is the use, because this one is the, is written as a use. This is the community-based. In other words, this is the shared as opposed to the individual house.
Well, I would recommend that they all be dealt with at one time.
That's fine.
Rather than dealt with singularly, so that we can deal with them all at one time, so that we can look at, you know, what we're, what we're going to permit, what we're going to make conditional ordinance, what we're going to make conditional board, and, and look at them as a group, rather than do them-
Uh, Mister, Mister Vice Chair, I, I will wait as long as it takes for us to finally get to this.
What are?
But I know it's so important and growing in the future, that I have got to hang in with it. I will defer.
I agree.
But I will not go to quietly, to legislative reference-
Nor will I.
Until we have, until we have made decisions about this.
And we, and we're going to do that.
Okay.
We're on the same page.
We're on the same page.
I mean, we're on the same page with regard to solving it, we may not be on the same page with regard to what we do with it.
So, you want to move to defer?
No, I'm moving to defer.
Okay, do we have a second?
And I hope you remember my gracious attitude.
Second by Councilman Henry, we got it. All those who are in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T four eight, T forty eight is deferred for further discussion, and we will not write it to the sunset, Councilwoman Clark, we're going to work on this.
Oh, yeah.
So, now we are on T twenty-two. Councilwoman Clark?
Uh, oh, is it, my, really, this is, wait a minute. I'm deferring to my colleague, I, I'm not, I mean, I would withdraw this if it were just mine, do you have anything there that? I'm, I'm withdrawing, move to def- uh, withdraw.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark, withdrawal, second by Councilman Henry, all those who are in favor to withdraw, T twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T twenty-two is withdrawn. Okay, we are now on T eight four five, this is BG&E, Councilwoman Middleton? Okay, so-
Second.
Middleton moves, second by Councilwoman Clark, correct? Reisinger votes yes, Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes, Branch is absent, Clark is yes.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Is yes, Mosby is absent. So, we have five yes with two absent, and T eight forty-five passes. We are now on T twenty-five, this is Councilwoman Clark?
It is, it's alternative energy systems.
Well, there are two other items here, were they already vote, there's two after-
Yes, uh, there's one other item that I need to address. I, I'll defer the, um-
Councilwoman Clark, defers, do we have a second?
Wait a minute, who, I got two items. The one about alternative energy, the Kraft one. I will move to defer that.
Second.
Second. All those who are in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, defer.
Now, I need, I would like to move the, um, an amendment that parking structures principal use in-
We did this.
Did we?
Yes.
I, 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 because I was not sure at this point.
Okay, so it's no motion.
Did we approve that already?
You withdrew it from this amendment because it was a duplicate of another amendment you had it in, nine three oh one, the table for R five through R ten has both parking lots and parking structures principal use as conditional by ordinance.
So, we got it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot, so, uh, move to, move to not have a motion.
No motion.
A motion, it's gone.
Okay, now we are on page nine of nine, and this is Councilwoman Clark, is this a withdrawal, is this a duplicate?
These are the, the heights in C one Village Center.
What is it, Stephanie, where is it? Okay, so, I'm in it, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Five, no, oh, yeah, move to withdraw, we did all this.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those who are in favor to say, to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, and T five nine eight is withdrawn. This concludes the referral, we're going to go into recess, but just, I just want to repeat that those, those, uh, amendments that we deferred with Councilwoman Clark, the committee will meet to discuss those, they'll come back for a vote. Councilwoman, Councilman Clark, I mean, Councilman Kraft?
I do want to clarify one thing once again. Uh, I did say something about this the last time, but since the last time, I have released the Fellows Point overlay, um, and so, uh, the actual, uh, amendments, the map amendments are in today's packet, they're also available online, as is the, um, the text for the overlay. They will all be part of the interlinated version, so when we have the hearing on the interlinated version, we will be having the hearing on the Fellows Point overlay, um, the, um, so people will be able to have their, yeah, the public hearing, they'll be able to testify at the public hearing. I have had many, many meetings and conversations with people, I've had numer- innumerable communications with folks, so anybody that wants to say anything about the overlay can testify at the hearing, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I want to thank everyone for attending the voting session. Our next voting session on City Council Bill twelve dash zero one five two, Transform Baltimore, will be April the first at ten AM, April first, ten AM. Thank you.